Alright folks, thank you for your patience. Like you call me to order, uh, Wednesday, August 6th, 2025, the first right to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Zachary Carhide?
Here.
Stevie Minor?
Here.
Paul Wright?
Here.
Tamara DiMatinos?
Here.
Okay, so for our first, uh, line of business, it's PLZBA 2025 0005, 2751 Fifth Avenue, and we'd like to declare this item as unlisted for the SECR.
Well, it's already done.
You guys already been done.
Microphone works better than the television? Great. Uh, hi, good evening. Andy Brick from the Brick Law Firm on behalf of the applicant home leasing for 2751 Fifth Avenue. With me this evening is Kelsey Carr, our project engineer, who's gonna hopefully set up our PowerPoint. Sameet Gupta from Five Corners Development, who's a project developer, as well as Angela Eichholz from Home Leasing, who is one of their projects, uh, developers, who's going to, uh, here to address all the financials and, uh, talk about, you know, the internals of the project, it's if you so choose. It's an exciting project. Um, as I'm sure you've seen in the media, there's an affordable housing crisis throughout New York State. Everybody has, you know, an idea on, on how to solve it. Home leasing is actually out there actively working to solve, um, affordable housing issues. This, they're in over forty, uh, projects throughout New York State, throughout, uh, the state with multiple, uh, locations. They have two in Albany, they have two in Schenectady. They are primarily an affordable, uh, housing specialist company. They're the type of applicant developer that every municipality I'm in wants to see in their community. I practice, unfortunately, I practice in just about every community, uh, in the capital district and, um, home leasing is the type of applicant that people like to see because they're a quality developer and they have a tr- a proven track record of providing quality, affordable housing, uh, to the communities. And this project is, uh, exactly what every city is looking for these days. It's a, uh, affordable housing project for senior citizens. And on, the gravy on the top of this one is that, um, it's also gonna remediate at Brownfield. Uh, 2751 Fifth Avenue is an existing Brownfield site. Our project, uh, is proposed to provide seventy-three, um, affordable units for people of fifty-five years of older, uh, after we remediate the brown site, uh, the Brownfield site underneath it. So, it's an exciting project. Um, I'm excited to present it. I'm excited to be involved in it. What I would propose we do is I'll have Kelsey go walk you through the site, uh, plan, um, and the site elements. I know you saw it back in February, but just to refresh your memory. And then, we, we are seeking a number of variances, so I'll come back up, we can go through each one and answer any questions you may have. We'll, uh, you know, present to you why we believe we meet the area variance test for each of the variances that were requested. So with that, I turn it over to Kelsey.
Thank you, Andy. Um, so, as Andy mentioned, so the project is redeveloping the former First American Towing and Recovery Site, which is located between Fifth Ave and River Street in the north central neighborhood. The site has been vacant since 2023. Uh, so these are some images of the existing site and the existing buildings. Um, as you can see, they're in very poor condition and have been condemned by the city. We are just waiting on national grid to do the final utility disconnect, which is actually scheduled for this Friday. And then we are going to proceed with demolition of the buildings. So we're here tonight requesting five area variances that we first presented to you back in February. So those are parking zone front setback, front door not facing the primary public street, roof form, ground floor transparency, and building height. Uh, so this is the previous site plan that we presented to you in February. Um, so the first variance is to provide a three-foot front setback for the six proposed exterior parking spaces, where a twenty-five-foot setback is required. Um, so this design, as we have shown here, is only, is the only feasible location to provide unrestricted ADA parking spaces, as well as exterior EV charging spaces that are required by the code and required to be exterior per the buil- or per the fire department, um, as well as some visitor spaces. Uh, so there was some concern that was raised about this design shown here, about the sixty-three foot wide curb cut. Um, so we therefore revised the design to, uh, reduce the parking from seven to six spaces and have provided a curved island to split the parking into two separate curb cuts that are now eighteen feet and thirty-six feet wide. Um, and we feel that this design is more pedestrian friendly and will result in the drivers turning in and out of those spaces at a slower speed. The next variance is to allow the front door to face north, where the code requires the front door to face the public street. Um, so this orientation facing towards the ADA and visitor parking spaces, as well as the accessible sidewalk, we feel will improve the pedestrian safety for this specific senior housing use. The next is roof form, where the code requires the use of dormers and variation in height. Our design instead uses different facade treatments and colors, as well as undulation in the building wall to achieve the same architectural interest. Uh, the next variance is to provide seven percent ground floor transparency, where the code requires fifty percent. Um, so due to the site constraints, the ground floor is proposed to be interior parking, uh, and there will be an area of unexcavated bedrock at the northern end of the building. Um, so this configuration allows for limited opportunity for transparency, because you don't want to have full, uh, views of a parking area. Um, so we have now revised the design, uh, as shown in this updated rendering, to add ground floor windows on the Fifth Ave frontage, where we felt that it made sense. The last variance is for building height. So the neighborhood three development intensity zone allows for three stories or forty-foot maximum height, and we have five stories proposed with a fifty-eight foot six inch height. Um, so as seen on this slide, there are numerous factors that are driving the need for this variance, and we're gonna talk through those in a little bit more detail. So to start, the building footprint has been carefully designed to overcome the existing site constraints that include over twenty-five feet of grade change from east to west. There is shallow bedrock with significant areas of bedrock outcropping, as well as contaminated soils that will need to be remediated as part of the project. So despite the zoning allowing for an eighty percent impervious coverage, we have over forty-seven percent of the property that's actually unbuildable due to the site constraints. Um, so this is forcing the building to have to go taller to be able to achieve the number of units that makes sense for an HCR funding application. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Andy.
So, we didn't want to just propose an application without looking at current city guidelines and codes and plans in terms of what the city is looking for, and we, we think that we meet, um, a lot of the, the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. But in 2022, there was a downtown revitalization initiative, strategic investment, and it focused on north central, and, and, and north central has, to put it charitably, underutilized parcels. It's a remnants of what used to be there in the industrial age. Uh, there's also, the, the recode Troy, the new zoning code, which was enacted a few years back, was focused on removing the auto-centric uses that exist in north central and trying to make north central, bring it more into conformity with the residential components, uh, surrounding it. And all of Troy's plans, and as I said, the, the current crisis, everyone's talking about the, the drastic need, the desperate need for affordable housing, uh, for families and seniors, and, and we're providing a proposed, uh, senior housing, fifty-five and above, uh, that, that will be affordable, um, at a price point that meets a certain percentage of, uh, average medium income. Um, and basically it's designed to, uh, meet peop- uh, seniors who may be on a fixed income, but on the lower spectrum of the fixed income, so that they don't have to look elsewhere. If they're downsizing or they can no longer afford where they are now, then they don't have to look across the river or up the hill. They can stay in Troy, um, and, and we provide the opportunity, uh, at, at an affordable price point. We think it's a great location, um, because it is in proximity to downtown. Uh, it's in proximity to the new bargain grocery, uh, which is right down the street. Uh, I'm sure you know the site, but it's right across from Mount Olympus, the bedrock outcropping. It's between, uh, North and Rensselaer Street on, on Fifth. Um, i- it, it's walkable. Um, it is in close proximity. It's on, you know, CDT A bus line. So it's a, it's a great location for the use we're proposing, and, um, we think that there's a need. Uh, we think that we're addressing senior parking, secured covered parking underneath, um, rather than an outside parking, which we, we think will be helpful. And we're not impacting the view shed. Whenever I present, uh, to a ZVA for a height variance, the immediate question is, how is this gonna impact people's views? More so, uh, and more importantly in this instance, because there are river views, uh, in the area, and, you know, it, it's on the hill, so it's an important component. So what we did is we did photometrics, um, from various, uh, locations, uh, looking at the building. These are the views from River Street. Uh, you can see the building superimposed on, on the left side, um, as you approach. Uh, this is from River Street, but closer to the building itself, so it's more of the upfront. And we didn't want to cheat and just give you the summer months, because that's a great, you can't even see it there with the trees out, but we wanted to be fair and show you what it would look like in fall and winter months, uh, as well, in that location, as you're, you're closer to the building, um, as you traverse River Street. We also just wanted to point out that we're showing it as if there's been, there will never be development along River Street. We anticipate the way the city's turning around and, and all the good things that are happening. We anticipate that some of these infill lots will be constructed at some point. So we also showed little silhouettes of if a two-family, if, if a, a railroad flat house got built there, how much more it would cover it. So we think eventually all those will be infilled, which will decrease the visibility even further. You see those? Those are the little outlines. Again, from River Street, but now you're past it, uh, you know, go, going past it, looking back. Again, with the infill development, we think we'll cover it. From Eighth Street, uh, you, you, you do see it slightly visible above the existing, uh, industrial type uses along Eighth Street. But if you look at it in comparison to the skyline, um, you'll see that there isn't much, you know, river view or anything like that from Eighth Street. Um, and we're only gonna pop up on a small portion of the overall skyline. Uh, we think it's a dominus impact. And, and from Ninth Street, uh, you can barely see it in, in the winter, back there between the two buildings. Can't see it in the summer, and like I said, at some point, hopefully that, you know, lots like that will infill along that corridor, and, and you won't even be able to see it from the streetscape at that point. There's more from Ninth Street. And one, one of the components that I'm very proud to be associated with this project is that this isn't, um, we're asking for variances to allow this project, primarily the height variance. Um, not because, oh, we want to maximize the profits involved by building as many units as we possibly can. Uh, the, the density is one of the solutions to the affordability crisis. Uh, what density is, and Angela's here to answer the hard questions, because I don't understand all of it, but home leasing does this not only through New York State, but also throughout the Northeast. They have the ability to determine if they get a certain amount of density, they can crunch the numbers, they can work with DHCR, and then they could say, we can make an affordable project work, and we can lock in at an affordable rent if the density is there. Certain things are fixed costs. For example, your foundation. The foundation costs what the foundation's gonna cost. Um, if you put three stories over it or five stories over it, the foundation is still the cost. But if you only have three stories over it, then the cost of the foundation and the cost of all the other construction costs are only spread out through those three stories. And that's where the numbers don't really work from affordability context, because you can't keep the rent down and still make the project work. So by going up, the, the height variance we're requesting, that diffuses the costs to a larger number of units in the same footprint, and that gives them the ability to crunch the numbers and work with the state to come up with a project that they can build and keep the, the rents affordable on a monthly basis going forward. And they have to keep those, they have to commit to a certain affordability when, before DHCR funds. So this isn't something that's a sliding scale. We know going in what they need in terms of density. And, and we've determined that the variance that we're requesting for height, which although it seems, when you look at a number of stories, it seems a lot, oh, we only allow three and you want five, so it's almost like a sixty-six percent variance. Um, but in terms of actual footage, we're only asking for an eighteen and a half foot increase from the code. The code allows forty feet, and we're at fifty-eight five. So what really, I would argue, is not a substantial variance, because it's just an additional eighteen feet. But that additional eighteen and a half feet gets us seventy-three affordable units for senior citizens. That, that's the key. The, the benefit to the, provide that, the seventy-three units for our seniors outweighs the detriment of the extra eighteen and a half feet. You know, it, it's basically our whole argument. But if you have any specific questions about the financials of it, Angela's here, and, and she can do a much better job with them than I can. We have significant project support throughout the community. Uh, we, we think this is exactly the type of project that the city and the administration, um, is supportive of. It supports the comprehensive plan. It's addressing the affordability crisis. It's converting what is charitably characterized as an eyesore right now, um, into something that, that's attractive. You, you've seen the renderings, um, and it's cleaning up a brownfield. So it's a, it's a win-win-win, uh, in our opinion. Some, just some of the renderings. Again, we addressed concerns, uh, that both you and the planning commission have. We still are going through site plan with them. The, we added the windows, uh, for the transparency on the first floor. We are still seeking the variance, but we minimize though, that solid wall. And we're also gonna drastically landscape it, so it's not going to be a solid wall. It's gonna be landscaping, uh, which is gonna be dispersed with windows throughout. And, and we think that addresses the transparency variance. The transparency when it's a parking garage doesn't necessarily make sense. Uh, you, you don't necessarily want to have it open to look in and see the cars. I think the recode, uh, which I was involved in drafting, the transparency idea was they didn't want solid walls and then people living upstairs and living, people living between solid walls on the first floor along your streetscape. Uh, but they didn't contemplate garages. I don't think a parking garage is what they would think of with transparency, where you want to look into the parking garage. So we've addressed it by hiding the parking garage, but then doing the windows and, and the landscaping to hide the wall. And, and we think it's an effective means to basically put the, the parking garage out of sight. And again, existing conditions, wha- to what we're proposing, we, we think is a drastic, drastic difference. And that might be all. So, we are here, the entire team, to answer any questions that you may have. Like, briefly go through the variance test. You have our answers in the application to each element of the area variance test for each of the five variances that we're requesting. But briefly, does the benefit to the applicant, if the variance is granted, outweigh potential detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood? The answer, we believe, is yes. Uh, but, but it's not just the benefit to the applicant. It's the benefit to the city as a whole. Um, it's a benefit that, uh, the benefit to provide affordable senior housing, seventy-three affordable senior housing units outweighs any potential detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood. We don't believe there isn't. Uh, there will be a minimal visual impact, but we've minimized it to the extent that we, we can, and we think the need for affordable housing, um, outweighs any potential detriments. Will an undesirable change be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties by granting the variance? Oh, we don't believe so. We've minimized the viewscapes. The nature of the topography there with the bedrock outcropping across the street, already nature is, is eliminating the viewscapes for us. So we don't think there's gonna be an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. We couldn't identify anywhere specific where river views were lost because of the topography. Again, uh, those minimal impacts to the sky, but, you know, we didn't impact river views. Can a benefit sought by the applicant be achieved by some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variances? We can't. Um, Kelsey went through the, the site, the site constraint challenges. We are very constrained on that particular site, not just from the Brownfield portion of it, but from the, the topography and the falloff. But we can make it work there with, with the minimal variances we're requesting. Are the variances substantial? I mean, there's no argument. If you say you want five stories, but three's only allowed, that it's substantial. But again, I would, I would focus on the footage. Yes, it sounds like a lot with five stories, but we're really only asking for an increase in eighteen and a half foot, which I, I would argue is not substantial. Um, and then the other variances aren't, aren't substantial at all. And i- in my experience, substantiality is relative to each individual project. Something that may be substantial on one project, if you just go by straight percentages, isn't always something that's considered substantial on another project that may, you know, want you to say no. For example, you have something on your agenda tonight behind us, where by my quick math, they're asking for a nine-hundred percent variance from the setback for the, for the carriage house. But it's a huge, is it substantial? Yeah, it's nine-hundred percent. But is it a good idea? Absolutely. If you look at the application, you can get past the substantiality of the variance, and I think is the, the same as the case with, with us in the building height. And lastly, um, will have an adverse impact on the physical environmental conditions of the neighborhood? We don't think so. We're gonna take that site, you, you know, you know what's there now. Gonna demo it, hopefully this week. We're gonna clean up the brownfield, and we're gonna put a beautiful building on top of it. So we think we're actually, uh, you know, positively impacting the physical environmental conditions of the neighborhood. And is the difficulty self-created? Every variance is self-created. You know, it, you, we're, we're looking to purchase the property. We want to do all these things. It's obviously, yes, the answer is always it's self-created. But as you know, that doesn't necessarily, um, you know, constrain you from still granting it. And I would argue that to the extent that there is affordability housing crisis that we need to address, that is not self-created. So although we're asking for variances for this particular property, we are seeking to address something that, that isn't self-created and has a benefit to the city and city residents as a whole. So that's my whole spiel, and we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Questions, guys? Questions from the members here?
I have a question. So in some previous situations, we've had the fire department, um, specifically for affordable housing situations, as they present their own specific problems. Has, have you spoken to the fire department? Is the fire department like pro, pro this project, anti, net, neutral? Uh, has there been any discussion with the fire department?
Or the police department.
Or the police department?
Yep, so we, we actually met with both fire and police, um, most recently, well, it's been a long time now, but most recently with Chief Behringer, went through all the specifics about the project, and I'll let Angela speak to some of the, um, nuances of what we're doing within the building to help, uh, put precaution, precautionary measures in place. But, um, I think the more relevant thing, uh, according to what his concerns are, is that this is a, a senior housing building, as opposed to a lot of the other projects where they are seeing lots of fire calls or police calls are family oriented, so stereotypically, it's gonna be, uh, that, that number's gonna be significantly lower. Um, and then secondly is that, uh, this is a, um, the income bands that we're proposing are a lot different than some of the other projects that are out there, where you're seeing a lot of those issues. So this is not as deep as affordable as some of those other projects that have concerns. I don't know, Angela, if you wanted to talk about some of the other things that home leasing does, in order to be proactive about it.
Some of the other items we talked about with Chief Behringer involved, um, the type of construction that we're gonna be including in the building, um, how the alarms are set up and structured. Uh, he had a concern about them being directed to the fire station directly without intermediary. Um, the way ours are set up, they'll be basically tiers, so that they, just because somebody burns popcorn, doesn't mean it's gonna immediately go, um, to the nine-one-one call. Um, we also have staffing on site, which I think, um, is gonna help alleviate a lot of that, having, um, property managers and maintenance staff available to help and assist, um, to prevent these types of incidences.
This isn't assisted living, right? This is?
No.
And I, I would just add, I was recently in a meeting with the chief regarding a different apartment proposal, and one of the things that he informed us was that, um, they now are requiring specific radio gear inside multifamily buildings, so that if there is an issue, Troy FD's radios will work inside the building. I guess that was a problem in the past. So that is something we anticipate they'll require for here as well, and we're, we're happy to do it.
I have a couple of questions.
Couple of questions, if I could, please? The term affordable housing project has been used. Could somebody define or articulate with a rent or lease payment where affordable housing falls in terms of dollars and cents versus a loose generic term?
So, um, the only way to answer this is to go broad and then specific, um, because the targets do move and the rents move, as with the definitions. Um, the low-income housing tax credit financing mechanism that we intend to use for the project restricts the rents to sixty percent of area median income and below. That is based on household size, so if you are an individual versus a family of two, that rate's gonna change. Because this is a senior project, we anticipate most of the units will be one bedrooms. Um, we do have a handful of two bedrooms. Um, we don't anticipate any family sizes above two. That's not to say it couldn't happen, but for the most part, in these types of projects, it's usually a single individual or a two-family household. At sixty percent of area median income, um, I'll be honest, I don't remember where the most recent, uh, exact number is, but it's right around, I wanna say, fifty-five thousand dollars a year in annual income. Um, and that gets updated annually. So the rents are set so that no household pays more than thirty percent of their income towards rent. Um, if we have a tenant in there who's a long-term tenant, um, we tend to raise their rents slower. Whereas if somebody leaves and there's someone new comes in, the, the rents do go up appropriately. So it'll be a moving target. Um, the rents that they are to, as we underwrite them today, are gonna be, look a little bit different than when we put them in operation in two years. Um, but I would say, on average, we're probably looking at rents somewhere in the eight hundred to a thousand dollar range. And then we also have income bands. So there will be some units prob- likely targeted to households earning seventy percent of area median income, and there's probably gonna be some set at fifty percent of area median income. And that is a conversation that we would work out with the state. Typically, how the process works is once we get, um, approvals from the variances, from the ZVA, we go back to the planning board. We would submit an application to the state. We would propose a rent plan, and then they provide feedback to us, and we make modifications to adjust to them.
So you really don't have a real number?
It's not gonna be two hundred dollars, but it's not gonna be two thousand. Um, I know it'll be in that range, and I know that it'll be affordable at, for households at or below sixty percent of area median.
You mentioned tax credits. Federal or state?
So it's a federal program, um, but we also utilize state credits as well.
Limited partnership or private funding?
So both. Um, we, we get credits from the, uh, government that we then sell on the private market. We use that private equity as our first line in our capital stack. Our next, uh, tier of capital funding is soft subsidy from the state, and the remainder of the funds come from private sources and, uh, mortgages that we go out on the market in. And the remainder of the funds come from private sources and, uh, mortgages that we go out on the market and.
Has home leasing actually purchased this property?
We haven't under contract.
But you haven't closed?
We have not closed, no.
Let's go back to the number of units in the building, seventy-three, correct?
Correct.
How many parking spots?
I think it's sixty-six.
Mid-sixties and then there's also a street.
So that's in the basement.
Uh, the most majority of, well, sorry, the mid-sixties is in the basement. We have the six outside.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But that's more for guests and stuff.
And that number was, um, based on, I believe we provided you a schedule of what our other senior properties are that we own and manage. Um, we also have a list of tenants that do have cars and this falls within, in line with what we see for other similar projects we have.
So you're looking for relief of two stories over and above the three?
Correct.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So if, um, if we denied some of these, but grant you some of these, is the project still going to go forward or is everything? What are our contingencies? What are your contingencies? Other than, you know, obviously you want, you want all of these. I mean, we could ask you to change some of them, but, um, where do you sit with these variances? For instance, if you didn't get your five stories and we only threatened you three stories, would you still be able to continue?
I did, no. The project ends.
The project ends.
Yeah. There's no, there's no, there's no possibility of getting this penciled out at three stories. It does not work.
So I am a visual person. I think that it's not an attractive building and the, the change of colors is not enough for me with the various, with the angles or changes in height and stuff like that. Is that something that can be changed architecturally?
Yeah, that's something we can explore.
Because I mean, I think what's happening in Troy is that there's a lot of affordable stuff happening. And everybody's swooping in with these very generic buildings. And I think we have a really cool city and I think we have an obligation. I don't have a problem with, let's make the city better, but let's make the city equally as pretty as it was a hundred years ago. And, you know, if there are some stipulations on roof lines, which is obviously put in there for some reason, aesthetic reason, um, I would like to see nicer lines. That looks like a hotel in Miami. Or Binghamton. It doesn't, it doesn't look like Troy to me.
Yeah, we're after the, the visit back. I mean, I will say the planning board was very enthusiastic about the design. So it's somewhat always.
Yeah, well, you know.
Another question if I could please. Did somebody say that forty-seven percent of the property in this proposed project is undevelopable? Or did I misunderstand that?
That's right. So if you look at the site plan. So basically everything that you see in the green that's behind the building is sitting twenty-five feet below the grade of the building. Right? So that alone doesn't allow us to, to utilize that property. Um, additionally, because the rock, um, the, the, uh, rock outcropping is, is so, uh, high or
It is.
Right below the surface, there's portions on, on the right side of the building where we had to build over it or we couldn't build on it altogether. So between those issues, the fact that there's also a brownfield cleanup that's required here. I mean, that's, that doesn't relate to the forty-seven percent, but ultimately we are constrained in working with a very small footprint where otherwise we would be allowed to use eighty percent of the overall site.
But you knew that going into it?
Sure.
Okay.
Can I just ask a technical question? It's not to do with the variances. Some of you can be quick about it. When you clean up these, these brownfields, obviously you take stuff out. Do, do you put like some sort of material or some, a barrier down?
Yeah. So all of this is done in, in coordination with DEC.
Yeah, but just give me like the, the four dummy version of what happens.
Yeah, I mean, I, until we go through the process with DEC and they hopefully provide a recommended remediation. You don't know exactly what the, what the, um, what it could be in situ situation. It could be chair removal or it could be vapor barrier. There's different scenarios based on the nation where they'll say this is how you're going to job.
Well, I just wanted, so with the DEC too, just because it is a brownfield, there's no health risks?
Well, that's the exact point of going through the brown.
Well, I understand that. Like just because DEC is involved, you know, I mean, there's data showing that once these things get cleaned up, there's no health risk to, to people living on this property.
And we, because of our funding, we also have additional environmental, um, oversight, I guess you would say. Um, New York State HCR has their own environmental department that is extraordinarily stringent in their requirements and they will do a full environmental assessment review. And they have the authority to impose additional requirements on the development as they see fit.
Okay. If you would go back, there was a graphic which, um, I think showed the project financing or something like that. I, I'm not sure if it went through it a second ago. You just passed it there. So it, can you explain that?
Sure. So, um, as it was mentioned earlier, with any of these developments, there's certain fixed costs that we have in a project. Um, whether you're building three units or three hundred, you know, some of those fixed costs don't go away. One of them is site work. We also have certain design fees, legal fees, surveys, we have to do a survey. Whether we build one unit or a hundred, still has to get done.
More cows in the barn, you spread over your fixed costs.
Yeah. Um, so after we come up with our total development costs, um, something similar happens on the operating side. So one of the pushbacks I get often is, well, you're just a greedy developer trying to make money off this. You want a variant so that you can make more money. That's not the case. We are required to meet the capital programs manual as issued by HCR. And there's a stipulation in there that the projects may not cash flow more than forty-five dollars per unit per month. Um, the way the underwriting guidelines work is in addition to that, the vast majority of the limited cash flow that's allowed ends up going to a deferred developer fee, um, which essentially is payment that we are deferring later. And I can tell you from experience is often never seen. Um, so that really tiny thin line at the top, that's the cap on our cash that likely we will not even ever see. Um, we also have reserve contributions. Um, so that's just the nature of the project. Any lender is going to want to see you put money towards, um, you know, replacing the roof when it gets bad, right? So we have, that is part of our operating budget. You have your standard operating expenses. This would be things like snow removal, property manager, um, uh, spraying for pests, that sort of thing. Um, the cost does go down a little bit, um, when you go up in unit, but as you can see, the numbers don't really go down that, that much. It's, it's helpful, but it's not enough to move the needle. Um, then there's the taxes piece, which is, uh, a pretty simple calculation. The big part of this is the debt service. So with any project, we go to equity first, uh, that's the base of our capital stack. And we use soft subsidy and the remainder is going to be filled, uh, mortgage. And that mortgage payment is going to be determined based on how much available cash flow we have from the project that the bank will allow us to underwrite to. Because the rents are limited with HCR, I can't get a bigger mortgage. My mortgage is going to be capped unless I increase my rents. And I won't, you know, even if rents increase four percent next year, which is kind of a lot. I'm never going to get to the level I need to, to fill that giant gap from four thousand a unit to twelve thousand a unit. So by having a larger project, what it does is it allows that additional cash flow to fill this fixed cost that's going to be required to do the remediation and to make sure that we're building it to residential standards.
So, so what is the thirteen thousand dollar number? Is that?
That's just the total of all these numbers added up. So you can see how, um,
Is that what you need to generate per unit, per year?
Yeah.
So would the rent be in line with that number or more?
Yeah, it, this is an average, but the average of the project will be in line with that.
Your taxes are on there, but you have, aren't you getting tax credits, you said?
So there are two different tax programs. There's the taxes that we pay on the property. And then tax credits is a separate part of the IRS code that we use. I don't have a lot of time to explain it, but it's, that's on the capital side. So this is the operating side of taxes. And then the tax credits I referenced earlier would be the capital side.
Just from that.
Tax credit passes through to private investors who underwrite the project.
Yeah, okay.
Different from City of Troy property. You show taxes in your bar graph. Do you have tax abatement in mind with the City of Troy? Or do you have a proposed period where you're not paying taxes?
So we underwrote this project as, in this example here, um, using five eighty-one A, which is, uh, allowed by right under the New York State tax code. Um, we would be open to exploring pilot payments if that's a preferred structure for the city.
No, my question was, do you have anything pending with the City of Troy in lieu of paying property or school tax?
Currently not.
Okay. I'm done. I don't need any more questions.
Anybody out there?
My name is Ellen Sinopoli. I live on First Street in Troy. And I've been a resident here for thirty-five years, which I guess makes me a newcomer, but, okay. Uh, but one of the things that attracted me to Troy was its very unique architecture. And I know that the city needs to move forward, it needs housing. There's lots of components that need to be taken into consideration. But your comment about what makes Troy special, I think unfortunately it's getting lost when I see boxes put up, one box after another. And what are these things going to look like in ten years? The atrium, the big circular white building that we have in Troy that has nothing to do with anything about Troy. I just am advising you to be very careful about what is built. Because the last thing I'm interested in, if I'm going to stay in age and place, is what Saratoga looks like at this point. And I've tried to drive up there, go to the co-op or do something. It takes me forty-five minutes from get to, to get from one side of the city to the other. And the huge buildings are right up against the sidewalk. Where's the green space? I'm just asking you to consider what makes Troy, I don't mean to pick on you, but I'm asking you that you consider what makes Troy special and that we not lose sight of that as we move forward.
Thank you.
Is there anybody remotely, um, engaging on there? I have a question.
I didn't see anyone. I didn't see anybody sign up.
If there are no additional comments from there, then we'll move.
Yeah, good. I think wants to respond. Think, yeah, could, may want to respond.
Oh, um, no, I mean, we appreciate the comments and we agree that architecture in Troy is fabulous. Uh, but I think what really drives Troy and Troy's history and success is Troy's people. And we're trying to provide a, a project that gives Troy's residents the ability to stay here and, you know, age in place.
So, uh, before you take up the, the variances, I think it'd only fair to advise the applicant that, um, we only have four members present. Uh, so the, obviously the motion will fail if, uh, if there's a tie. And, uh, if the applicant wants to, uh, adjourn to the next meeting, where hopefully we'll have five. Uh, that is up, up to you.
No, you can't.
That's just it, you can't.
Can, can, can we get a sense of maybe we should adjourn?
I just want to make one last statement here. So the, the owner of the property right now is, is a friend of mine, somebody who, um, actually him and I own a handful of, uh, market rate product throughout the city of Troy. Right? And, and we're purposely buying in the north central area because we believe that that's a market that is in need of help. And it's something that a land bank's been pushing. He's a contractor. This property, although we are being, we have an obligation to demolish the site. He's going to turn around and turn this into a, uh, a site for his construction. The fact that there's a seven, seven-figure plus cleanup on this site. There's very few opportunities for someone to come along and say, I'm going to deliver this by virtue of the fact that you have all of these site constraints and you have a seven-figure brownfield cleanup that ninety-five percent of people don't know how to go through that brownfield cleanup program just because it's not their, their business. So it's not a day, but this is just letting you guys know that absent being able to get the height that we need, this property is likely going to sit there for years, if not decades. Given the fact that nobody's going to want to pay seven figures to clean up the site. I mean, the land itself is cheap in the grand scheme of things. It's really the cost of, of doing this. And the next person that comes along and says, hey, I want to build something, they're going to be coming back and asking the same, uh, same height variance. And I think, I just want to echo one more thing that Angela said because you guys, not you guys specifically, but you've seen me in the City of Troy for many years. When typically when a developer is coming here, they're asking for more density because they want a few more dollars in their pocket. That is absolutely not the case with affordable housing. With market rate housing, that can be the case. It's not always the case. Affordable housing, this isn't a function of, we need more density because we want to, we want to enrich our pockets. This is a function of, we need more density, otherwise project doesn't work. And project doesn't work, we walk away and the property is going to sit there for many years like this.
Well, we can talk amongst ourselves publicly.
Publicly, right.
So what do you estimate the cleanup to be? You said it was seven figures. Do you know what, do you have an estimate where you're thinking it's going to be?
Uh, I mean, so early indications, again, we have to go through the process with DEC, but early indications.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. It's me.
You're talking the mic.
I'm sorry. Um, so until we go for a medial action work plan and go through the whole process with DEC, we don't know exactly. But our engineers who have done the phase one and phase two and all the work on the site so far have given us a rough estimate around one point two to one point five.
So, well, okay, so to my peers, anybody, so I mean, I don't love that it's a five-story and that if it's a three-story, it's not going to work. I mean, it would work if it was a four-story or kids or can we meet halfway in the middle? Is that, is that a possibility? That's, that's one question I have to do. I, I don't have a problem with the, I like the windows. I mean, and I applaud you for taking this brownfield and cleaning it up. So that's awesome. Um, you know, what you've done with, with the parking garage, the windows, I have a problem with that. Front door, whatever. It's the way it looks. I think it, I, I wish it could be a little bit shorter and a lot prettier. I mean, made that sound ridiculous, but that's my opinion.
It looks like an apartment building to me.
It, it doesn't look any different than.
There's a way to make it look like more of historical. There's a way to make it look like more of historical Troy.
There's, there's ways to make it architecturally.
I live, I live, I live a half mile up the hill. You know, it comes down the hill and you're right. It's, it's a nice one. It through there. But I mean, you can come down and then look like, you know, if anybody takes this wrong way, say, well, there's portable housing, as you can tell, boom, you know, I just think.
All right, so I just, I just want the board to, it's okay to express your opinions on the, on the, the the aesthetics of the project, however, that's more in the planning board's purview. And so I mean, you're, you're concerned with the substantiality of the variances that are requested, whether or not the hardship is self-created, you know, things like that, all right? And if if some of, if some of those things, you know, those are the things that you need to base your decision on, okay? Whether or not you feel that the project sufficiently meets the test or a test, I guess, to qualify for a variance in your judgment.
Do we vote on each variance request or one summation?
So I would, it would be. So, so I mean, it seems, I don't know what the, what, does the applicant have a preference in terms of order here? Because I know that the height variance is the most critical one to the entire project and.
I don't know that we have a preference. I just, I don't think that one overall vote is workable because each variance, I think.
No, it would have to be separate votes. I'm just, I'm just wondering. I was asking if you had a preference as to which one we vote on, they vote on first.
I, I don't think you do.
Yeah.
And I, I would just add that, I mean, Rick is absolutely right about the, the appearance considerations. But you also do have the ability to make recommendations back to the planning board. You are still, you know, in front of them. So if you would grant the variances and then have a condition that you pass along to the planning commission that you don't like the look of it and you want it to look more like Troy, they would take that into consideration and, you know, keep our feet to the fire when we get back to them.
And I wanted to clarify a little bit, okay? There's appearance, meaning what have been referred to as boxes, you know, that people seem to find that objectionable, some of these forms. Then there's appearance having to do with whether or not five stories works in the City of Troy, you know, for this, for this zone and district. And that's, those are two slightly, those are different considerations. The second one has to do with zoning. The first one having to do with color and form of the structure is more a planning board consideration. But you, and, and as Mr. Brick just said, you're free to make any recommendations you want to the planning board and I'm sure they'll consider them.
You don't need a seeker?
We do not need a seeker in the playbook.
Confirming. All right. So, well, we never got answered. They wanted us to vote.
I think they want us to vote.
It's on. So do you want us to vote as a, as for, or do you want to, that's, we're still, I mean, I don't think we ever got an answer yes or no.
I mean, it's just a courtesy we're extending you if you want it.
I move that I move that the board approve the variance with the, with no conditions, I guess, on the first one, based on the following fact, we only need one of these.
So which variance are you moving on?
Oh, sorry. So we'll start with the first one here, the, yeah, the applicant. The five-story one, the applicant possesses construction of five-story building where the maximum is allowed is three-story. And really just two, two stories of saw.
And the height variance, which is eighteen feet above the forty-foot.
Are we doing them individually or?
Oh, two separate ones. I apologize. I apologize. Sorry.
So then the first one, which I'll call the five-story, the property is, I moved that the board approved the variance. The property is, is able, is unable to provide a reasonable return unless the variance is approved based on your funding requirements. Do we, then we vote individually, right?
So, so, so someone has to second.
I'll second it.
So you want to call the roll?
Yes.
No.
She can vote.
Yeah, I mean. I, I, I'm okay with the height of the stores. That's fine. Yes, I go yes.
Paul?
I know. Although yes.
Motion passes, right?
Motion passes through one.
All right, for the next variance, the maximum height allowed is forty and the applicant is, applicant is proposing fifty-eight point six with a relief of saw of eighteen point six. I moved that the board approved the variance. I'm going to go with the same one. The property is unable to provide reasonable return unless the variance is approved because of your funding requirements.
I'll second that.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes.
On the next one.
All right, the, the next variance is the parking zone requires a front setback of twenty-five feet. The applicant is proposing zero relief, a relief of twenty-five feet is requested. Oh, sorry. Excuse me, I must have an old version then. All right, parking zone requires a front setback of twenty-five feet. The application is, is proposing three feet. Let's see here. All right. Oh, I'm sorry, a relief of twenty-two feet, sorry. I moved that the board approved this variance based on the following fact. The requested variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood.
Second, you need, you need a second move.
Second.
Yes.
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 So, yes.
All right. So on the next variant, the application proposes one percent ground floor transparency while the minimum of fifty percent is required for the non-residential use. Relief of forty-nine percent is requested.
And that's.
All right, sorry. All righty, I move that the board approved this variance based on the following findings of fact that the property is unable to provide a reasonable turn unless the variance is approved. Again, based on funding.
Seconds.
Yes.
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 All right, moving on. The, the applicant is seeking a relief to orient the front door, main facade facing north. I move that the board approve this variance. And I'll use the, the request variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character, neighborhood character of the neighborhood. I think it makes sense where you're putting the door to put draft traffic.
I'll second that.
I approve.
Yes.
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 All right. Zoning, the next variance, the zoning code requires large roofs to be interrupted by dormers and height variations relief. So I have to use variation, variation in the building color and material instead. I move that the board approve this variance. And the request variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood based on the different colors.
Second.
Yes.
No.
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 I think that's everything.
That's all I got. But I might have an old form. So is there any others that you, did I miss one?
Nope. Thank you for your consideration. Appreciate the time you spent. Thank you.
Mara, did you want to make any recommendations on the record for the planning board?
How do I do that? Yes.
To speak out on the record, okay?
I would.
So.
I would love to make a recommendation to the planning board for all that would like to hear. I just think we have an obligation. The planning board has an obligation. We and our residents and the people who are coming from the outside to rejuvenate our city to take a look at what we have. We have people making movies in the city. We have people coming to the city to be interesting. I would like our city to stand by the idea that people want to come to our city to say, wow, look at that cool building. Let's go look at that building. Why can't we make everything interesting instead of cheap?
It's very specific request that you have.
Request? Well, yes, I think it should be architecturally interesting. And, 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 and borrow from some older styles.
Understood. I can relay that message.
Thank you.
Sure staff will, but I get it. Okay.
I would echo that sentiment.
Understood.
I saw it also.
Yep. Okay.
We're pretty sure Zach.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Zach, you just recommended that the project be architecturally interesting. Reflect the architecture of the City of Troy that is pre-existing.
That sounds good.
We can do that right now.
I second that. Oh, you want a second? I'll second it. Approved.
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry.
The motion was made by Paul. Spring Avenue. Sacred Heart.
Rick, are we?
So, sorry.
Just one second.
It's a sacred heart?
Yes.
Yeah, but that's not the next.
So why is this? They're not changing it. So why isn't it just a type two? So the unlisted might be ill-advised. It's really a type two, which does not require a secret action other than perhaps you recognize that the board finds it to be a type two action. As far as I know, there's going to be no changes to the exterior of the building.
So the board declares a type two, we don't need a secret project.
Second. Second.
Yes.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. P L Z B two zero two five zero zero four five three ten Spring Avenue. You can come forward, folks. Now you can come forward. Speak loud for us.
Oh, yeah, no.
Yes.
We are T S L.
T S L.
We've been at Sacred Heart for sixteen years with our, our school age programs. Should we sing? No, we've been at Sacred Heart for sixteen years doing school age programs. Apparently we didn't need special variances for that, but we're transitioning into a daycare license because the school recently closed. We're taking over some of their academic programs in partnership with the school district. And as such, we need to have a license for daycare with O C F S, which again, we currently have, but the license is different that we're applying for because we're working with younger kids with the U P K programs. So we're getting a daycare license and continuing our programs there under lease. And we're using a section of the building that is more than twenty-five hundred square feet. And I'm told we needed a variance because for daycare purposes, you needed a special approval to utilize more than twenty-five hundred square feet in the building. So we put it through the application for that.
I have no comments, no questions, no.
Can you present, tell us your name? I don't think I.
Oh, Thomas, Thomas Stiles.
Shamika Brown Johnson, Lynette Smith, we're twins. This is, we're T S L. We've been around the capital region since two thousand nine. We have before and after school programs, summer camps, but we were afforded the opportunity, I guess, to stop it. Stop it. I'm proud of who we are. We're not going to be here all night. But basically, we're just asking for, I guess, permission to, to do more with the U P K programs that are currently in the building, but they close. I know you're familiar with Sacred Heart School and we've been here like, well, we've been in business for sixteen years, but they closed and that's why we're here because we were, we're going to do the U P K programs there, but I think we have.
I have a question. Everybody uses anachronisms. What is T S L? I have no concept as to what.
Thomas, Thomas, Shamika, Lynette.
But it's also togetherness.
I got it. Sort of like the Supremes, right?
How many kids do you think this is going to add to the variance?
I don't think it's going to add anything from what they had because the school already had, we're just taking over this programs that were already closed. I don't think there'd be any increase in.
I have one other question. I don't see it happening. What if the diocese says we want to get the space back for classrooms because we have this sudden miraculous enrollment? How does that relate to a variance that you would get tonight from this board in dealing with that potential situation? I don't see it happening, but.
No, I don't think so. They, well, I mean, one of the discussions was maintaining the academic portion of their mission and maybe one day doing exactly that. I, I don't see it happening. You know, Father Yanis up there, I think he's trying to get to retirement. God knows what will happen with the parish in general once he does retire. We have another place on 547 River Street. We opened a daycare center at the new facility down there. No, but we are, that was our backup plan. That was our plan B because we've been at Sacred Heart for a long time. So we figure if Sacred Heart ever folded or something happened, then we would have, you know, a new place in Troy. Because we love Troy. I went to Sacred Heart as a little boy. I grew up on the east side. I live in Troy still on the south end now. So, you know, I love it in Troy and I dedicate myself to Troy programs even still. So Sacred Heart is a special place in my heart. Even the mayor's son went to our programs too. He's older now, of course, but you know, so it's, it, I think for us Sacred Heart is, for Troy, it's been like a, you know, it's very sad to see the school close and all that.
Yeah, well, thanks for keeping it.
Yeah, yeah. We're thankful for the opportunity. We're unsure how it would go, but yeah. Yeah, so. But we went for there 16 years.
Any comments from anybody out there in the audience?
Hi.
Come on up. She's just giving the thumbs up. That's all. That was it. Okay.
How about online?
No.
No.
Sorry, I don't know.
Do I have, I don't have to do the. Yeah, I, I move the, the board approve the variance. The variance for the school center for the project, I'll talk to by 12,100 square feet of gross floor where it only allows 2,500 feet. A relief of 9,608 feet. I, I, the variance will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. We actually, the opposite, we determined to nearby properties if this is granted, because it's really keeping what's there.
I'll second that.
Yes.
Calling for a vote.
Yes.
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 Good luck.
Certainly.
So moving along to PLZBA 202500461819 Fifth Avenue.
Good evening, Lindsay Cooper, on behalf of 1819 Fifth Avenue Associates, the property owner. We are seeking a variance of about 91 feet. We have applied for a subdivision with the planning board wherein the existing lot has two structures. One is a commercial office building. The other is a renovated carriage house that sits at the end of a driveway, which is gated in by a brick and iron gate. By reason of the subdivision, one of the lots, the only structure on the lot will be that carriage house that sits at the end of the driveway. So the variance we are asking for is the length of the driveway. Which the carriage house currently sits and has sat since it was constructed, however many hundreds of years ago.
So in talking with staff. I guess it has been suggested that the staircase, which is at the rear of the main structure, the main house structure. And would be in lot one if, if the current iteration of the easement were, if the subdivision went the way it is now. Well, I guess it would be in lot one, no matter what. I'm sorry, but it's not included in the easement.
Not at this.
And that is a, an exit. There's a door leading from the main structure that empties into the driveway ultimately, I think, or something like that. Have you considered, have you taken that under advisement yet?
Yes, we haven't. And the, I believe that the easement we provided previously was, was a draft and we are open to amending that to include that staircase if that is.
Okay, and there's. Then there's also the issue of whether or not the dividing wall between the two structures is fire rated.
It is, it is solid brick. It is fire rated.
The back wall of the building where the staircase sits?
Yes, I was in there yesterday. I saw it myself. And I believe we provided photographs. It is a brick wall on either side of the staircase.
I was talking with Eric specifically before and he wasn't, he didn't think that, have, has that been reviewed by our building and plans department?
It is under review currently. I provided a comprehensive floor plan of the interior to.
I saw, I saw the plans that you provided. I didn't see whether or not it was brick or anything like that. I didn't know if the Carlo had, had blessed it or not. And the, the third thing is I think there may be some confusion in the grant of easement between lot one and lot two. Specifically, the second paragraph, I didn't really get very far in it, at least not the whereas paragraph, but the second grant paragraph.
How so?
I think it says that. It says that the owner, the owner of lot one will not use the easement. Except for the purposes in the grant, which is maintenance and access. And lot one is the carriage house, which I thought had retains all property rights. And it would be the owner of lot two, whoever that is, would only use the easement for maintenance and access. Do you see what I'm, I don't know if you have that in front of you or not.
I do. I have it in front of me right now.
I don't know if that was intended or not. I meant to raise it actually privately with you.
I believe it can be read to, and I think the original intention is that the, the owner of lot one will not use.
Use.
Permit to be used for any other purpose. We can amend that language if that, for clarity purposes, if.
Well, that's, it's really for your benefit and protection, I think, because if you, I, I don't know, I, I don't think you meant to limit the uses for the owner of the, of the land itself.
Lot one is not the owner of the land, the easement area.
I thought lot one is, is going to be the carriage house.
You're correct. Yes, lot one is not the carriage house. So yes, I, I can amend that language. Again, this, we provided the, the draft. It's subject to whatever changes.
So I, I mean, I don't think we have, I don't think the board has any real objection in principle to, to granting the. The variance that's requested here, but I, we. I think the board would really like some assurance from the building department that that back wall is going to work and it wouldn't hurt to have the easement encompass the back staircase perhaps. And. Clarifying the grant language.
Absolutely. We, we would certainly.
So if, I, I don't know, would, would the board be able to table this with your consent just for one more time so we get this all straightened out?
Yeah, we would have no issue.
I make a motion to table.
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 See you next month.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. It, at present, that what I've heard from the applicant is that they currently have no intention to sell, but.
There's no, there's no imminent sale or intended sale.
Just out of curiosity, why?
The two buildings have two very different purposes at this point in time. One is an office building and the other is a fully renovated residential carriage house. That was the initial motivation is just to separate them into one.
I can't hear you. You're fading out.
I apologize. The two buildings on each lot, one is a large office building. It's being used for commercial purposes. The other is a fully renovated residential carriage house. So the intent at the outset of this was just to separate them into one lot that's going to be residential and one that will be used as an office building. Continue to be used as an office building.
Can I ask a question even though this has been tabled?
Sure.
So is there any ramification? Because that is in a New York State historical district and a Troy historical district, changing. Changing, changing a building that is quite fabulous in Troy and has a lot of provenance, all of a sudden sort of chopping it in two. On paper.
I'm not sure at this time. I could, you know, take that under advisement and look into it further. That has not come up thus far in our, our plans.
I guess my only question goes back to why would you subdivide it into two separately legal lots? Unless the intent was to sell one of them.
They're going to sell them.
Of course they are.
I have no, no knowledge of any, any plans to sell anytime soon. I'm sure, you know, always a possibility in the future.
I mean, the, the real issue here is, is just the variance, so.
Yeah.
What they intend to do with, ultimately with the properties.
Here nor there.
Ultimately, it's more of a planning issue too.
Okay, so if there's no more business, I ask for a motion to adjourn. I would propose a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting if there's some more business.
I second that motion. I approve that.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.